Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you all for coming out to today's meeting. Let us always remember our first responders, our soldiers that are in harm's way due to the disturbances throughout the nation, throughout the world. They have been called, so we're going to constantly keep them lifted up in prayer. We will start off with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Cobb. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Smith, either one of y'all, if you would like to do the invocation, please feel free. Please stand.
As we bring in all one in minds and thoughts, realize that it's only God who make a way for each of us. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask you to go up and down this city council's chamber, touch each and every one within this body tonight, touch our city leaders, God, and dial them with your wisdom high. And oh, Father, any animosity, distinction that may enter this chamber room, God, we ask you to silence it so that it won't come up again, God. We ask you, God, to continue to bless us, believe in our nation, God, touch it right now, God. Then, Heavenly Father, we actually bless the ones who are standing in harm's way as we stand here and enjoy the fruit of life. Bless the ones in the disaster areas, God, around our country, God. While you shattered your protection, protection around the city of Colleen and allow no harm and danger to come to us, we thank you, Heavenly Father. Then, God, we ask you to give us the wisdom, understanding that the things we do will be pleasing your sake, that you only receive all the glory and all the presence. Realize there is someone in hospital tonight, touch their bodies right now. There's someone who didn't wake up this morning, God. Well, God, may they rest in peace. And then, God, again, God, we ask for peace, harmony throughout this chamber, God, and nothing of distinction of this harmony will come up in this chamber. We ask it in your mighty name of Jesus. Amen, amen, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones and Councilwoman Cobb. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Boyd.
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no.
Motion carries seven to zero. We will now have our work session. Counsel, you have three times to speak, three times each. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
MN 24025, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of September 20, or excuse me, September 17, 2024. MN 24026, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of October 1, 2024. RS 24192, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the purpose of a STEP grant.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, and good afternoon, Assistant Chief Gierhart.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For consideration today is the Texas DOT Selective Traffic Enforcement Program STEP Grant. This is an annual grant, most of you have seen this before, and this is for fiscal year 2025. The police department successfully applied for and received a one-year traffic safety grant from Texas DOT. The grant's part of that STEP program I just discussed. It funds law enforcement overtime efforts to decrease incidents of speeding, DWI, ferry due seat belts, intersection violations, and also cell phone violations. The grant will provide $56,497 in funding, which will be used for overtime efforts aimed at promoting traffic safety, reducing accidents, and improving the safety of Colleen's roads. The total grant, as I said, is $56,497.45. Texas DOT funding is $41,958. There's an in-kind match that is $14,539.45. Those funds are included in the FY 2025 overtime budget. This grant is also for FY '25. The recommendation is the Colleen Police Department recommends accepting the grant and enhance traffic safety for both residents and visitors of Colleen. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, do you have any questions? This is an item that has come before us many times. All right, thank you so much. Madam Secretary.
RS 24193, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with MRB Group for the design of the emergency homeless facility in the amount of $255,970.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Good afternoon. Background on this is Council adopted the Homeless and Mental Health Strategic Plan in February of 2023. The proposed project follows the plan by constructing a facility to provide a range of services to the public, specifically those that are experiencing homelessness. The city will construct the facility. A service provider will be responsible for day-to-day operations. The proposed contract for engineering design with MRB Group is $255,970. The location is still on Liberty Street. From previous presentations that we have had, we have not changed that. This is just a concept of what a Sprung Center would look like. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the execution of a professional services agreement with the MRB Group for the design of the emergency homeless shelter, previously noted as the reunification center, in the amount of $255,970. I am available for questions as well as MRB Group, Sprung Center, and also Families in Crisis, as well as the City of Colleen's engineering staff.
Counsel, are there any questions? Ms. McNair.
Yes.
The RFP for someone to manage this facility.
Yes.
Do we have a group that will manage it?
Yes, we have one respondent, which was Families in Crisis, and they proposed to move their Friends in Crisis operation from the Sprott Street address, in which they currently are, to this new facility.
Thank you. That, Family in Crisis have done an excellent job, and this is what they do, and they're in the business of taking care of our unsheltered population. And thank you and your staff for everything you have done on this project.
Thank you.
Counselmember, I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor Pearl Town.
Ms. McNair, thank you for your presentation. So with this Sprung Center, it looks like, by all accounts, it's going to be a much larger facility. So now that you've mentioned Families in Crisis, this is going to be larger than the facility they're currently in, it looks like?
It's, it looks larger, but I believe, according to the leadership there, it's approximately the same, just maybe give or take a couple of square feet, but around the 11,000 square feet.
All right. And so when you're looking at if this is approved, as far as turnaround time or construction time, what does that look like as far as the expected availability of this particular unit should be allowed to move forward?
I can answer that. Would you like me to bring up Tanya from MRB, I'm sorry, Tanya McKesker-Reed?
Is that okay, Madam? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. Tanya McKesker-Reed, VP of Architecture for MRB Group. The timeline, if we just said today, we probably would be in there in 12 to 15 months. We've got a three-to-four month turnaround for design documentation. We've got probably a nine-to-10 month build time. There's a little bit of variation in there, because as you know, when you've got a third party that's doing the operations of the facilities, Families in Crisis, I don't know, I don't want to speak for Families in Crisis, but they may be looking for grants, or maybe deadlines for grants for operations. But just start to finish, three to four months of design time, nine to 10 months on the outset of construction time, so roughly a year to 15 months from today's date.
Outstanding. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to find out in reference to the design, do you have an idea, in terms of design, the amount of people, occupants, that you're designing this for?
I do not know that yet. Go ahead.
So as we have the discussion with the city, the engineers, Sprung Center, and Families in Crisis, once we start to figure out what the layout, the floor plan is going to be, then we'll be able to say how many people we can serve. Our goal is to maintain what Family in Crisis serves right now, which is 75 to 80 people. So we don't want to reduce their capacity, but we want to at least maintain it. And in the future, if we have a phase two, that we'll be able to expand what they provide there.
Okay, because the picture looks quite large.
That's, I don't know the square footage on that particular rendering, but I think it's larger than what we had. Originally, the City of Colleen was going to develop two Sprung Centers, but due to budgeting, we only have enough at this phase to do the one. So we're going to start with the 11,000 square foot, which will allow, if, you know, once we get to the point of entering into the agreement, they will be able to transition their operation from Sprott to this new site.
Okay, and to Families in Crisis, in terms of the operation?
Okay. While they're coming up, may I say that the very first thing that we'll do is go into a programming phase, which we will invite and engage all of the stakeholders, including Families in Crisis, the staffing. So at that time, we'll have to establish how many offices we need. Are there going to be particular medical rooms, or telemed rooms, or conference rooms? So we really don't know what the layout of the building is going to look like at this phase, but that's the first thing we will do, is jump in with the stakeholders and do programming. So, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
And also, the item on the agenda is the professional service agreement.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
The item is the professional service agreement. So I think, right now, going into details on how it's going to operate, we have to agree that we want it to be built first, and then we can go more into it.
Right, yes, ma'am. And that's why I wanted to know, if we're going to agree that we're going to design this, because once we accept that we will go into the design phase, I think we would need to kind of know how the operation is going to look. That's why I'm asking to stay here, if that's okay. Is that okay? Or do I need to wait for another time?
Madam City Attorney, can he go into the details?
I mean, the item is the professional services agreement, but I think if the question is, is this, is this design going to work for the kind of general concept, not without going into specifics and like really going into the operation, but just is this kind of design, and will they be working together, those kind of things, I think would be appropriate to this issue.
Can you answer that question that she proposed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you can answer it, because we want to stay on the agenda. So we're going with her question to get what you want out of it. That's the only question we can ask, to stay on the agenda.
Is that question on the agenda, what I'm saying?
Well, she just stated the city attorney. She worded it so we could stay on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just curious, because to me, it relates to the design, if we're going to say, if we agree to go forward, we would need to have some kind of idea of the operation as well.
Yes, sir. I think that it is a part of the design, of course, but the operations will kind of run in tandem with the design, but also on a separate contract. And if I might give you an example, we're working with the Bell County Justice Center right now on the diversion center. And as you may or may not know, the diversion center is owned, the facility is owned and constructed by the county. It's operated by Central County Services, which is the local mental health authority. And so there is this overlapping of responsibilities. So I think it is our duty as design professionals to make sure the facility works for Families in Crisis, since they'll be the operators. But to the mayor's request, right now, you're authorizing professional services for us to begin that process.
Okay.
To have those conversations.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. With that said, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all. No further questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Sagar, I mean, Councilmember Adams, you was before him. Councilmember Adams.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I know we, Families in Crisis is right now the current applicant for RFP, but as you design it, my concern is to make sure we design for, like Ms. McNair mentioned, expansion, and the potential, possibly, not saying that Families in Crisis is not going to always have it, but the possibility of it. So as generic and expansive as possible, will that, and will that design come back to council for approval, or we're delegating that to staff?
This is not going to be a facility that is going to be easily expandable, because it is a simple structure.
Gotcha.
It is, however, in a facility that it has maximum flexibility. So if five years down the road, 10 years down the road, another entity came into it, the flexibility of the complex would be as flexible as any structure could be, because it's a self-supporting structure. It's wide open in the interior. Any walls or divisions that we might do on the interior are strictly going to be non-load-bearing partition walls. So the flexibility is there, the expansion, not so easily to expand. The recommendation would probably do a second structure.
And I guess for that, looking at the design, is that, I've seen those before, and they're kind of modular. Is that, is that the outer structure, is it modular at all?
Well, modular is probably not the right word for it.
There's Sprung.
There's Andrew.
We have a lot of people here on this.
I just had to jump in. We're such a nice crowd here. So expandability, this building itself wouldn't be as expandable, you know, easily, but the site itself is.
Okay.
You know, we have this one lot, and I think the future plan was, there's the area to the north on this whole lot, which would be where we could add another building or something in the future. So as we design the site, we'll make sure that at least we have the utilities available and everything to go, something in the future, and that would be a separate contract.
I think that's what I'm looking forward to. Thank you.
And please make sure any design will come before the council for approval.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Mr. Sean Coons was here from Sprung Center, and he could also talk about expanding on the structure once it's built. If you would like that answer, or are you satisfied with Mr. Zager's?
Hi, Council. Sean Coons, Sprung Structures. To answer your question, the earlier that you addressed regarding the Sprung Building, it is a modular design construction. So it is pre-designed and pre-engineered, and then is assembled in place to all the codes and requirements. And then the design on the inside will allow for the build-out, and like Pryor mentioned, the interior walls of the offices, so on, are self-supporting and not part of the structure. I will note that our buildings are expandable, so you can remove an end and expand it if necessary, but I find in most of these applications, on prior applications, is having, you know, even if all the services are in this one building, and later on you decide you need more beds, et cetera, for the unhoused population, you can add a second building and connect them via corridors and the rest. So there is a lot of options on that designs point. It just depends on what your needs are today, and then as they evolve in the future, we can, we can adjust. But the structure itself is pre-designed and assembled on-site.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Sagar.
I just need a quick refresher on this. This emergency homeless shelter, it's not going to be used on a daily basis. Is it just for emergencies, or is it going to be run like the homeless shelter that Families in Crisis?
It's going to be ran and operated like their current Friends in Crisis on Sprott. So it's a 24-hour operation. There is a window that they do ask that the guests exit so they can clean and sanitize, but there are some that are able to stay inside. So yes, it will be an exact replica of that. It's not an emergency, almost disaster-type shelter. It's an emergency shelter for people who don't have housing, and they need somewhere to go for the night.
Is the, and the one on Sprott, that one's going to remain open?
No, they are, and William Hall and Suzanne Armour are here. They are actually going to transition that space into a different operation, which will be providing services to veterans and their housing needs, and also outreach in the community. But it will no longer function as a shelter in downtown Colleen.
Okay, yeah, I missed that part, because when they came up and you said that Families in Crisis were the only ones, I said, wait a minute. I wanted to get kind of an update on how all that's going to work, because I think I'm a little bit behind the curve on that. So if you guys can just give me an update on how that transition and all that's going to happen, I'd appreciate it.
So I just want to...
You just want me to send you one, or you want me to give you one here?
The update is off the agenda. I want to continue to remind you.
Yeah, you can send it to me. That's fine. That's fine.
It's the professional service agreement. Ms. Tiffany, you have heard the desires of the council on certain areas. Mr. Cagle, you heard that also. So you know what they're looking for. I know it's a professional agreement, but they want to get down to the nitty and the gritty, everything. So we can put that on a future agenda item, so we can stay on the agenda. And also, Counsel, if you have access to go to Fort Cabosso, these buildings are out there, and you can go in and see how it's inside and how it's created, if you have that access. Thank you all for taking your time to come and brief us on this.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 24194, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the procurement of fleet vehicles and equipment in the amount of $6,831,538.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mrs. Tangaline.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I am presenting today the procurement of fleet vehicles and equipment for fiscal year 2025. Background, the fleet services manage 1,045 units rolling stock. That includes maintaining the annual fleet procurement schedule. The procurement schedule based open available funding, vehicle age, maintenance costs, et cetera. The annual fleet procurement budget, as you can see, for '23 and '24 there, in fiscal year 2025, includes 593,000 of additional fleet. While taking this opportunity to give an update on the current pending fleet orders, that orders placed from October 2021 all the way to 2023. For drainage, we have one unit that it will be estimated time of arrival on late 2024. For fire department, we have 10 units with arrivals on late 2024 and 2025. For parks, we have one unit, the estimated time of arrival is late 2024. Police, 22 units, that is between 2024 and 2025. Transportation, we have six units estimated to be here late 2024. Also, solivates have five units for late 2024. And for water and sewer, we have three units that it will come in late 2024. In a summary, of 48 units are remain to be received during this year, this calendar year, and 18 during 2025. 112 units were received since October 2023. Those were units that were delayed because of the pandemic. The procurement information for this item is a total of 47 units of fleet and are being purchased in this request at a cost of $6.8 million. Aviation, we have one unit. Development Services, we have one unit. Park and Recreation, two units. Public Safety, 22 units. And Public Work, 21 units. The fleet being purchased are on the approved fleet procurement schedule. The fleet purchases are budgeted and in compliance with the local government code and the city's purchasing policy. And our recommendation is to city council to approve the procurement of the fleet vehicles and equipment in the amount of $6,831,538, and authorize the city manager or the city need to execute change orders in accordance with state and local law. I will be more than happy to answer any question you may have.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 24195, consider a memorandum resolution approving a 60-month lease with Pitney Bowles for the Utility Collections Division in the amount of $111,012.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'm presenting the item for Pitney Bowles lease agreement for our Utility Collections Division. The Utility Collection Division prepares the utility billing for the entire city and produces about 50,000 paper bills per month. The current leased mail machine is being discontinued due to not being compliant with the new technology standard that the United States Postal Service has put, has adopted. The current lease expires December of 2024, so if approved, the new machine will be delivered and installed, and the current lease will no longer be in standing. The lease agreement is for a 60-month term for a total of $111,012. The fiscal impact for current and future years is shown on this slide. And the recommendations for city council to approve a 60-month lease with Pitney Bowles for the Utility Collection Division in the amount of $111,012, and that the city manager or designated be authorized to execute any and all change orders as permitted by state and local law. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. There are no questions.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 24196, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a letter of support for the creation of the Central Texas Water Alliance.
Thank you. Mr. Cagle.
Mayor and Council, I won't read all this to you. You've read it, but we know that Texas is a fast-growing state, and water is scarce, and Bell County has been leading the charge for some time to try to put together some sort of alliance with the idea that there's strength in numbers to look for other water resources around the state. And it was decided that the best way to achieve this would be through actual legislation that created a separate government facility, entity. And all this is, is a letter of support. It doesn't mean that we would have to join. There are no dollars involved with this at this time. If you do decide to join, the legislation is passed, the alliance is formed, and then some years down the road, water is found. We still don't have to, we still don't have to participate. It will, it will be up to the City of Colleen. This is just giving Colleen's approval that we would like to have a seat at the table for the future. And I think one thing people may ask, we've talked about our own water on many times, and it's very rare that you can have your own water, but there are some possibilities around the state. But we have enough water on paper for 50-plus years with our projected growth. We're in a very envious position. But the reason I think we should have a seat at the table is, that is one source. It's surface water. We don't know about future drought. And those lakes have been there a while, and they are silt-ing in, and we don't know about the federal government's willingness or ability to be able to take that silt out, to maintain the capacity without consideration of drought. So you're basically going to have surface water or groundwater. And this organization will look at all options and determine if they're feasible, and I think it's important for us to have a seat at the table. We may not want to participate when it comes down to actually funding this, but then again, we might. So it's very, very early in a process. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I believe I've seen this be discussed at the Carpus Cove City Council, Parker Heights City Council, I'm not sure what other local municipality for consideration. And it seems like there is a buy-in and understanding of why this is important and relevant at this time. I hope that the city of Colleen does move forward in supporting this. I happened to watch an interesting interview by the Texas Agricultural Commissioner, Sid Miller, relating to the issue of water in the state and his very, very significant position that we are in and looking, and considering the future. So this does have my support and I do appreciate the initiative of our state representative on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Segar.
Thank you. From, from my understanding, what this does is it brings a lot of different entities together and allows them to pretty much speak as one voice, giving us a little bit more power, hopefully more pull in the future versus a whole bunch of different entities speaking at once at different times. Is that kind of what this is?
Yes, sir, that, that is correct. And it gives a greater financial clout. And I think that's one thing that I was very concerned when I first heard this. Okay, do you just want Colleen at the table because we have a lot of customers and means a lot of money? And we don't want to be a part of this just to enable development in some other part of the county, almost competing with us. And that's really not the case. If we somewhere down the road decide to put any money in this for a future water source, it would be for our use, not, not for any other entity.
Well, and then you talk about money, but I think if, you know, sometime down the road, something is developed, I think it would be something, just like they do now, would be a charge to the, to the end user, the consumer and all that. So I don't even think it would get to that where we're actually putting in, unless it's like an upfront loan or something to get something built. But I think that most of the revenue, if that comes down to it, will be self-generated.
Yes, sir, it would be, it would be through water rates.
Water rates, yeah. So it sounds good, it's a good project.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. So you did answer, Mr. Cagle, part of the question that I had as far as the usage of the future water usage would be for us, not for something else. Now, is this alliance responsible for the research and location of possible water sources? Or also, is this alliance also then responsible for lobbying or legislatively as well? As a collective to assist with regards to allocation of water?
Yes, ma'am, that's the case.
Very good, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Our counsel, Judge Blackburn, met with all the mayors and all the entities that would be a part of this Central Texas Water Alliance and also with our staff members. And that we only are focused on today, but you never know what's going to happen in the future. And one thing about this council I can say is that you are really focused on 10 and 20 years from today was how we grow and we want to grow responsibly. So I'm hoping that all council members will get in support of this proposal that Judge Blackburn brought before us. He has been talking about this for a while. And Senator Flores and Representative Brad Buckley was also invited to the meeting. And they will carry the bill to your question, Mayor Protem, the legislative side to fight for it. Thank you, Mr. Cagle.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 20, RS 24197, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the execution of change order number two with HCS Inc. for the construction of the Rosa Hereford Community Center roof replacement in the amount of $1,716,736.27.
Thank you. Before we move forward, I just want to acknowledge that Mr. Reynolds and also Mr. Andrew was also in attendance of that meeting. Counsel, the next three, for the next four items are Mr. Revell. Good afternoon, Mr. Revell, and thank you, Madam Secretary.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. This project, as you all know, was a part of the capital improvement plan in 2020. Also, in May of 2023, the council approved the actual contract that is still going on now related to the remodeling and expansion of the center. During the construction period, during this construction time from May 2023, it was determined that the existing roof needed to be replaced sooner. Originally, there was some thought that it could be replaced later, but it was determined it needed to be replaced sooner. As a result of that, as the last bullet state, we presented to you all a design contract that would allow us to do the work that was necessary to figure out what that cost, to design it and figure out what that potential cost may be. That work has been done now, and that's why this item is before you today. It was determined that it would take about $1.7 million that would allow for that existing, for the existing roof to be fully replaced for the center. And as noted on the second bullet in the slide, that includes the gem, the new flashing, everything associated with drainage for the roof, that's what the sculptors are dealing with, and also adjusting the mechanical equipment. Funding is available in our, in our current budget to address this expenditure in this change order. And also, this change order would be within all of the state requirements as it relates to, you can't exceed 25% of project cost and that's not exceeded. And here, this is, this slide really is just showing the existing roof. You can see some locations where, where there's damaging and concern. But again, this would allow us to address the entire existing roof. So staff has recommended that the council would authorize this project in the amount of $1,716,736.27.
Thank you, Mr. Revell, there are no questions. Madam Secretary.
PH 24043, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Gary Davis on behalf of Whitley Trucking LLC, case number Z 2420, to rezone lots 1 through 3, Block 1, out of the Cox addition from B3 Local Business District to BC1 General Business and Alcohol Sales District. The subject property is locally addressed as 1906 North 8th Street, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am. I must note that on today, we received a request from the owner or the applicant for this project to actually withdraw this case. He could not withdraw, withdraw it himself, it would have to be a decision of the council. So before I got into this item, I wanted to see if the council wanted to entertain the applicant's request to withdraw this case.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle, I mean, Mr. Revell. Counsel, Mr. Revell is asking for a motion of direction to withdraw PH, I mean RS-24 dash, no, sorry, PH-24-043 from the agenda per the owner's request. Counselmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I make a motion of direction to withdraw PH-24-043 from the agenda.
Counselmember Solomon, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Counsel, all in favor of the motion of direction to move, to remove PH-24-043 from the agenda per, per the owner's request? Motion of direction, pass 7 to 0.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Secretary, whenever you read.
PH 24044, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by John Hart Bandis, PE on behalf of Laura McManus and Greg A. McDonald, case number Z 2421, to rezone approximately .22 acres out of Lot 11, Block 1 of the Fisher Commercial subdivision, Phase 3 from B5 Business District to R2 Two-Family Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 2303 Federal Street, Colleen, Texas.
Mr. Revell.
Yes, ma'am, this is a request to rezone property that's current designated as B5 to R2, which is the duplex zoning, two-family zoning. The request is being made by the applicant because they would like to actually put a duplex on the property. The star on the map shows the approximate location. Aerial shows the location as well. And I would say beside this is our fourplexes. Just surrounding properties. Okay. The, the, this request is consistent with the land use plan. It is also included in the intended growth sector and is compliant and consistent with what we would want to do in the intended growth sector, referencing Bullet 3 for more specifics. It features several comprehensive plan implementation recommendations, as is noted on the slide. And so staff finds this to be consistent with the comp plan. All public notifications have been accomplished to date. No written responses have been received from the surrounding property owners. This shows the surrounding boundaries in the property. As it relates to ingress and egress, everything is fine from Terrace Drive. There is no need for a traffic impact analysis because it doesn't reach the daily trip threshold. And then all water and sewer services are nearby and will be provided by the city of Colleen. There is a need to meet the parkland dedication requirements because this would increase residential intensity. And as noted on the slide, basically, the applicant at the time of the plating process will have to pay the sum of $1,200. It is located in the South Nolan Creek watershed. Portion is a part of the 25-foot buffer zone, but all of that will be taken care of as part of the regulatory review. And then we are of the opinion as staff that is consistent with the comp plan, also with the prevailing community character. Staff has recommended approval of this rezoning request. The planning and zoning commission heard this request on September 9th, and they also unanimously voted to recommend approval.
Thank you on that, Mr. Revell. Just like to thank you and your staff before you go forward for really focusing on the direction of the council with the comprehensive plan and also the residents' will that we build our home, our homes to a standard. Thank you for that, for following in that.
Absolutely.
Madam Secretary.
PH 24045, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Colleen Engineering and Surveying LTD on behalf of John Helen Purser, 1999 Trust, and Gary W. Purser Jr., case number Z 2424, to rezone approximately 21.77 acres, being a part of Lot 12 and all of lots 11, 15, and 17, Block 1, Southwest Crossing addition from A Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject properties are generally located northwest of Wells Fargo Drive between Tremere Road and Turkey Trot Road, Colleen, Texas.
Mr. Revell.
Yes, ma'am, this is a request to rezone property, about 22 acres of property from agriculture district to single-family residential. The properties, as noted in the second bullet, are generally located northwest of Wells Fargo Drive between Tremere Road and Turkey Trot Road. The star on the map shows the approximate location. We also have an aerial that shows the exact properties that we're looking at. Just showing the surroundings. And that photo was actually looking toward Tremere Road here. The request is consistent with the future land use map. It is also located in the control growth sector. Again, in the control growth sector, the two main things that we want to consider, or I should say maybe three. One is, do you have nearby utilities? In this case, there are nearby utilities, water and sewer off of Tremere, off of Wells Fargo, and off of Turkey Trot. And then two is, does it add to the neighborhood options and the housing options? And we believe that it does. And then the third thing, is it, you know, contributing to, is it being fiscally responsible? And from our calculations, from what we've seen to date, it's estimated, and some of this depends upon what's, what's the value of homes. If you assume the values to be about $300,000 a home, that will yield in terms of tax dollars a little bit over $6,000 an acre. As I've referenced before, that break-even point is about 33.50. And so this, this achieves that. And even from some of my preliminary analysis associated with the DV exemption, it still would be above, even if we accounted for that, it still would be above the 33.50. This is consistent with the comp plan, as we've said, in terms of those ideas, I've already explained this. These are the recommendations that would be advanced as a result of this project. All notifications has been accomplished. There was one person who responded in opposition to the request, and this person is located here. When you read the details of their response, it appears like they misunderstood. They thought that the rezoning that was taking place was going to happen at their property. And so they say they were against the rezoning of their property. So it appeared to be a misunderstanding there. As it relates to ingress and egress, all of that could be off of Tremere and also Turkey Trot. A traffic impact analysis at this time, we don't know if one will be required or not. But if it is required, it will be done. And we'll be able to determine that at the time of the plating process. Parkland dedication, based on the information that we have to date, if there are 69 lots that are added, this would be the parkland dedication fees. You, of course, you could, they would have to donate 1.03 acres or pay the fee in lieu of, which is the 51,750. And then in addition, also pay the park development fees. Just talking about the impact on natural resources. And again, a lot of that can be, will be addressed at the appropriate time as a part of the development process. As I mentioned before, there's all services nearby and available. Property, again, we believe that this is consistent with the comp plan, also consistent with the prevailing community character. And so staff is recommending approval of this request to rezone the property from agriculture districts, the single-family district. Planning and zoning commission heard it and on September 9th, by vote of 6 to 0, also voted to recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Revell, there's no questions of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem, sir. We will now go into our citizen comments. Residents have four minutes to speak. Counsel, you have one minute to give a statement or a comment. Our first resident is Sean Price. Good afternoon, you have four minutes.
Good afternoon, City Council. Most of what was my questions today on, on the subjects here were already answered. On the RS 24196, I was wondering what the, if there was an actual estimated figure cost for the man-hours put in, put to this to invest for the alliance? That means somebody's got to get paid to be on this or in this group to manage it, maintain it. So city hours have to be expended to manage paperwork, information, so forth, and communications-wise. So that's going to cost us. So just wondering if that cost analysis are, have, has been anticipated. With the RS 24197, with the roof there, I was just wondering what the, how old is our, the current roof? It's being repaired, how old was that? And then, and its original cost? Because I can't remember what that is. I thought it was within the 20, this 1.7 was within the 25%, but I could be very well mistaken on that. On the other topic, there was no information on here on DS 24066. There's no information online to understand what, what this title is and what it entails completely. So I'm at a complete misunderstanding of what that is. And in lieu of that, I would rise underneath 551.004 and 007 to propose an agenda item for next meeting as to the, the mayor's abuse of her power. for next meeting as to the mayor's abuse of her power.
Mr. Price, first warning.
This is my proposal. I am within law.
Mr. Price, it is not on the agenda. Ms. Brown, for yelling out, that is your first warning for disturbing.
Madam Mayor, please.
Madam City Attorney.
Please ask your lawyer here, because I will sue.
Mr. Price, please, not today. Mrs.
Do not insult me.
City Attorney, is he on the agenda or not? So he wants to put something on the agenda?
I rise, I told you, I wanted a proposal.
He can't put anything on the agenda, but if he's talking about something that's on the agenda, like the protocol. Is he talking about, I haven't heard much of what he's saying, so.
Will you repeat what you just stated?
I rise under Texas Open Meetings Act 551.004. Under this law, I have a right to make a proposal. Any proposal does not have to be on the agenda item for next meeting.
She's giving an answer, you're Madam City Attorney.
No, that's not correct.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Price, that's on the agenda?
Again, so what does the, discuss the City Council meeting protocol mean? Can you answer that, Mayor?
We'll get to it. Anything else on the agenda?
Well, that's why I wanted to rise to make the proposal to add to it.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
So can I add to it?
Are you finished with your time on an agenda item?
To discuss about your abuse of, your abuse of power?
The City Attorney has already answered your question, Mr. Price. Do you want to discuss anything else on the agenda?
I am asking about the agenda right here, ma'am.
If you're not going to discuss anything, your time is up. Thank you. Next person, Mr. Michael Fernino. You have four minutes.
All that follows is regard to this protocol. First and foremost, before you consider or proceed, you all swore oaths to the Constitution, which time and again, you've definitely shown that you don't know what's in it. Marbury versus Madison, that which is repugnant to the Constitution is null and void. We go to the 14th Amendment, no state shall make or abridge or enforce any law which shall abridge principles or immunities of citizens of the U.S. 14th Amendment, it's not just for black people, folks. Now, we're going to go to 18 U.S. Codes. Section 241, could you please tell that thing behind me to shut his trap? You're so standing on procedure around here. I tell them to go bent, but somebody already got to it. 18 USC 241 prohibits the conspiracy to interfere with the rights and privileges of a citizen of the U.S. This includes rights secured by the Constitution. We go back to the 14th Amendment on that. By the way, that one, that's a 10-year prison sentence. Title 18, U.S. Code, Section 242, deprivation of rights under a color of law to willfully deprive the rights of a person protected by the Constitution. Can't do that one either. That all amounts to, pens up, a bill of attainder. What you seek to do, Madam Mayor, in your fear and in your weakness, is to try to encraft laws, regulations, and whatever else, I'm sorry, is there goldfish back there? That are going to try to restrict specific people and/or parties. Now, let's talk about what brought us to this with all of that in mind, and tread lightly. All right. You're all concerned about safety and security. The record will show that not too long ago, there was a member of council who tried to come at me in public and had to be stopped by a county commissioner. A former mayor pro tem tried to attack me. And one of your close personal friends and associates that has now twice been appointed to KHA, I've witnessed at least one instance where he's come at a citizen. So where's the fear? And before you go to the point of order, knock it off.
Point of order, we can stick to the agenda. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
This is on the agenda.
Mr. Fernino, Madam City Attorney, is that on the agenda? Is that on the agenda, Madam City Attorney?
I believe there was discussion regarding protocol.
Oh, it's in the paper. In the paper, prints everything that you say as if it's holy gospel.
You can keep him to the topic of protocol.
Mr. Fernino, please stay on the topic of protocol.
I am on the topic. That you can't string two ideas together is not my problem. That's currently on you.
Mr. Fernino, please stay on protocol.
I am on protocol. There's that conspiracy. Where's all this proof that you're, you're the one who's driving this? Where's all this proof? Oh, I've got mean emails. Please detail to us one arrest that has happened from all of these emails that supposedly threaten your life, that cause you to abuse your office, exercise power that you are not granted. Where are these arrests? Where are all these people? Got no proof. And that's your problem. You don't like it that I have proof, especially the National Personnel Record Center says I have more proof than whatever letter from the VA. Tread lightly.
Melissa Brown, good afternoon, hold, stand by councilmember board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would caution against the veiled threats, one. Two, there's no need to reference race. And number three, we will not tolerate disrespect to citizens when you are addressing the council. You are addressing the council and no one else in here. No citizen should sit in this chamber concerned whether or not they will be disrespected by a comment who's, by someone who's speaking to the council. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jones, or whomever was talking, please, when someone, no one was talking over there? Okay, that's all I need to know. Melissa Brown, you have four minutes.
It is amazing to me. The mayor is allowed to place such vague items on the agenda. When we had citizens petitions, they were rejected because of vagueness. But here we have an agenda item that just says discuss protocol. Doesn't even say discuss your governing standards. Protocol is not even a thing unless you're discussing your governing standards, mayor. So you should probably get to know and learn your processes. The last time that we had an item that was so vague, it was discuss a complaint against an elected official. And while that complaint eventually came out to be known that it was against our mayor, it was not included on the agenda item. And therefore, any person who complained about an elected official at all was quickly gabbled and reprimanded. And clearly, this is the case again tonight because the mayor can't figure out what an individual thinks is protocol. If I believe I'm talking about protocol, then I'm talking about protocol, and you can't tell me any differently. You don't know my thought process. We have a preview of her intentions tonight based on her prior comments to the media, and my hope is that the council will have the moral courage to stand up for what is right for the citizens instead of allowing the mayor to continue to run rampant and abuse her office. The protocol should allow for citizens to address the council in some manner at the meetings outside of what you think is important because it's not just about you. You represent us. Also, again, point of order is for the body and not for the citizens, and it is not the job of the council member to determine what's on the agenda when a citizen is speaking. As for the Rosa Hartford Center, while we need to get the community center finished, the cost continues to climb. How are these needs not determined during the initial design and engineering phases? What is our total cost now that we are three years into the renovation process? The council appears to have approved an engineer that wasn't thorough enough. Will we be requesting any money from them for the additional unplanned costs that we have incurred? And how long will this delay the projects? On the water alliance, would this new governing agency be a taxing entity? How would this affect our contract with WCID number one? And would the City of Colleen maintain and control our own water rights under this alliance instead of allowing another entity to take ownership and then just delegate our water back to us? When it comes to the shelter, I agree that the, with Councilman Solomon, that knowing the operations of the building is essential to the design approval. We are about to spend a quarter million dollars just for a design. How did sprung structures get approved and involved? And where was an RFP for that? Did it go out, when, and where? This shelter is part of a larger plan that no longer exists. The staff stated already that this was supposed to be part of a reunification center, which it no longer is. This is a plan to get the homeless out of downtown and get them out of sight and out of mind. With the upcoming ransom improvement project, what happens when the city decides they don't want that unhoused on ransom? Before worrying about building new structures, the city should be more worried about preventing homelessness. Rental costs have grown out of control in part due to the decisions made by this council. This council should discuss how they can help landlords to offer low-cost housing before recreating a wheel that already exists. There has not been enough information to determine if any design will work at this time. So I urge the council to table this and give it more thought. And finally, with the STEP program, I would like to say thank the council in advance for supporting this grant. I know that many citizens have stated they are concerned about speeding and dangerous drivers. I know that KPD will use this grant wisely to make sure speeding and distracted driving is carefully organized to ensure the areas the highest concern to the citizens are patrolled. I want to end by saying I am Melissa Brown, and I am speaking for myself and only as an individual citizen of Colleen.
Your time is up. Next speaker is Ms. Sherri Hawke. Ms. Hawke, your hyphen last name, would you please pronounce it when you come to the podium? Apologize for that.
Sherri Hawke Volpicella.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm a constituent from District 1, and I've done some research on the location that you've proposed to develop the emergency homeless center. Your proposed site puts the most vulnerable at risk. There are in fact, three schools and a city park, all within a half mile of this property. As most people know, the main cause of homelessness is addiction. In fact, 68% of the national average is addiction. Another thought is that 21% of the homeless are mentally ill. Again, these are the national averages. The homeless in our area like to hang out downtown when they're not allowed in the shelter during daylight hours. This makes Colleen Elementary School and the homeless themselves both vulnerable because of the foot traffic of the homeless going back and forth from downtown past Colleen Elementary School. You may ask, why does this make the homeless vulnerable? In Texas, obviously, we have laws, and one of those laws is Texas Penal Code, Section 41 dot 164. It states that it is illegal to manufacture, possess, or deliver drugs within 1,000 feet of a school. The site you're proposing is literally surrounded on all sides by schools and a city park. We want to be able to help the homeless, not put them in jail. By putting this $2 million worth of construction in the proposed site is a recipe for disaster for all concerned, especially our children. The solution is a city-owned property called Moss Rose on Avenue E. It can be rehabbed for this use. It may even cost the city less to do this project. And most importantly, it's not literally in the middle of three schools and a city park. I have personally looked at this property. There's 12 buildings, all with viable roofs. There is so much more room that can be used in different ways. My background is in construction, development, and rehabbing properties. From what I see with the right administration for this project, you are looking at about the same price as the proposed new construction with the ability to give our homeless population a better start to reintegrating into our general population. There are spaces where our homeless will be able to start to rebuild. Giving a bed to a homeless person for the night is not a solution. Granted, some of them want to live on the street. They don't want to rebuild their lives. They want to be homeless. It's their way of life. But with this property, there's room enough for temporary housing for those trying to restart their lives, overnight stays for people who want to remain on the street, drug treatment facilities for those wanting to get clean, a place for childcare where a person can look for work or is working, a place where our veterans that are dying on our streets can feel safe again, there's space for kitchens to feed people, and other spaces needed to support and service our homeless population. Putting our homeless in a bed on a cold night is not the solution to this crisis. We need to help rebuild their self-worth, help them get clean, and get the services they need to become viable citizens of our community again. I ask that you table this vote until this other option can be explored. It may serve our homeless in a better, safer, and more comprehensive way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, madam. I do appreciate the citizens' sentiment and concern for the homeless. I just had some general questions regarding some of the statements, Mr. Cagle, maybe, or Madam McNair, to answer those questions. And I know at one point, Arbor of Hope was a project that did not quite get off the ground. It was an attempt to create centralized services after doing immense research and understanding the need. We do understand that there is a need for medical, mental health, centralized resources for this particular population. That did not work. And we also understand the challenges nationwide as it comes and relates to our most vulnerable population. The location is never a good thing. So here, a quick question. Who owns Moss Rose? Does the city own that building?
The city does not. From all records and accounts and things that I have just made myself aware of, that is owned by the Colleen Housing Authority. I believe just last night on KWTX, they talked about how the housing authority was in the process of disposing of that property to settle its debt, so it's not a City of Colleen no property.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear, so that there was an option there. That is not an option for us. We do not own that particular property.
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the resident for your concerns. Listening to what you were saying, I was up here reviewing what your thoughts were on it, and Colleen Elementary is actually currently closer to the existing Friends in Crisis Shelter, according to Google Maps. I mean, the other thing is that Moss Rose site, it won't be able to fit a facility of this size on that property. That building is currently, let's see here what the county says, that building is under 2,000 square feet. So anyways, just some, thank you for your thoughts, so. All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Difney. All right, council, let's get to the business of our regular session. You have three minutes to speak, three times each, consent agenda. Madam Secretary.
MN 24025, MN 24026, RS 24192, RS 24193, RS 24194, RS 24195, RS 24196, and RS 24197.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, can I get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
I had a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I second that.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Please vote if you have not voted. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary Publica.
PH 24044, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by John Hart Bandis, P.E., on behalf of Laura McManus and Greg A. McDonald, case number Z 2421, to rezone approximately 0.22 acres out of Lot 11, Block 1 of the Fisher Commercial Subdivision, Phase 3, from B5 Business District to R2 Two Family Residential District to R2, 2-family residential district. The subject property is locally addressed as 2303 Federal Street, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately .22 acres out of the 11, Lot 11, Block 1 of the Fisher Commercial Subdivision, Phase 3, B5 Business District to R2, 2-family residential district, providing a savings clause providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Reva? If not, is the applicant here? Sir, would you like to speak? Sir, would you please come up here? And please state your name, please, for the record.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem and counsel, I'm John Bandis, Bandis Engineering Company in Conroe, Texas. And I've been working with Laura and Greg for a couple of years. And this is, I think they want to cut this little piece off, which is otherwise unusable. And it will be, once it's cut off, it'll be addressed to Terrace Street, and they will build a duplex there. And I think, like Mr. Adell said, it meets all the requirements of the future land use and the city planning goals.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for coming up.
You're welcome.
You're welcome too, sir. We will now, Councilmember Solomon, do you have a question for Mr. Reva?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, but you, if you, I will come to you for that motion to vote, I will. Yes, sir. All right, I have to open up the public hearing. Melissa Brown, public hearing is open. You have four minutes.
Clearly, since the motion was just about to be made, the council has already made up their mind, you're ignoring us anyway, refusing to answer any of the questions that were brought up, or even pull a consent agenda item that was important to multiple citizens. So I withdraw my request.
Sean Price. You have four minutes.
City Council. When I look at this from the aerial view on Google, this is an open field behind an industrial area. Couple manufacturing, a church on one side, I think, and gas stations and everything that lead down the street to a cul-de-sac, and we're going to build stuff on the cul-de-sac, if I'm correct. I don't, I'm not sure, but we're putting neighborhoods now directly inside manufacturing and/or business district areas. Is that what it did? Is that the whole plan here now is to combine residential and stuff? Because, I mean, otherwise, you know, I'm just wondering about the spillway that's there too, because that's a runoff. And if you've ever seen the trailer park next to that, that whole area floods when it rains and goes down there. So I'm just curious that, are we going to now develop this whole little green grass area? Because it's the last refuge for the wildlife in the area. They don't really have a lot of area to hang out. We've developed pretty much everything. So I'm just wondering how this is good for everybody, right? How it fits in with the comp plan? Because I don't understand it. It just doesn't make sense to me. It's like, really? Okay.
Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Solomon, can I get a motion to approve?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve PH dash 24 dash 044.
Councilmember Boyd.
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 24045, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Colleen Engineering and Surveying, LTD, on behalf of John Helen Purser, 1999 Trust, and Gary W. Purser Jr., case number Z 2424, to rezone approximately 21.77 acres, being a part of Lot 12 and all of lots 11, 15, and 17, Block 1, Southwest Crossing Edition, from A Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject properties are generally located northwest of Wells Fargo Drive between Trumier Road and Turkey Trot Road, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 21.77 acres, being a part of Lot 12 and all of lots 11, 15, and 17, Block 1, Southwest Crossing Edition, from A Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District, providing a savings clause providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Reva? If not, is the applicant or representative here, and would you like to speak? Good afternoon, ma'am. Please state your name.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council, and city manager. My name is Michelle Lee with Colleen Engineering and Surveying. I'm here to represent this case, and it's a simple rezone from agricultural to R1 single family for a proposed subdivision. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. Lee, thank you, but there are no questions for you. Thank you, ma'am. We will now go into public hearing. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown.
I will put my comments on this on the record, even though I don't think it's going to make a difference. In fact, we have council members getting up to leave while citizens are speaking, so that should probably be discussed in protocol. However, this is an area that is in a controlled growth zone. I know that it's been discussed multiple times that controlled growth doesn't mean no growth. However, I do know that the same area was brought up for single fam, not this, not these two lots, but the same general area was brought in front of the council in 2021 on the Turkey Trot area to go from agricultural, B5, to R1. And it was determined at that time that the location was not a good fit for R1. If you look at the photos, if you took time to look at the map, if you've been down in that area, this is one of the few rural areas we have left. This is part of the Donut Hole. This is also an area that, even though it's not necessarily in a flood zone, it is prone to having a lot of water runoff and that going all the way down toward Onion Road, towards Love. It has a tendency to cause a lot of issues. There's traffic to be thought about, intersections to be thought about, but those are all things that would be proactive thinking by the council. I would highly, highly, highly recommend that this is disapproved. This is not an area fit for R1. If you wanted to have any development there, make it, make it an AR1. Make it so that there are, in a state, make it so that there are bigger lots. Make it so that you can still have development there, but not the congestion. Because controlled growth, while it doesn't mean no growth, doesn't mean that you pack it in as tight as you can, as long as the utilities and the infrastructure exist. You're talking about at least one of these roads that still has no curbs or gutters. Looks like it's basically a county road that you would have to go out and use. So now you're talking about not just the traffic from the subdivision, but you need to think about the construction process itself, and how many trucks will be going down through there, what they're going to be carrying, what this means for anybody who lives in that area, for students who walk. Any of those things need to be taken into consideration, and I haven't seen any of it. So I do not see how this fits into the comprehensive plan. In fact, from where I see it, this is completely opposed to the comp plan. Let's stop developing that area, and let's worry about taking care of what we have. Let's worry about taking care of North Colleen and the issues that we have there. Let's worry about infill because the comp plan talks about doing infill. Comp plan doesn't say take everything that's ag and turn it into R1. I think that this would be a mistake to approve this. I think that it would be an injustice to everyone who lives in that area, and I don't live very far away from there. So I can tell you that this is also personal to me because I do live in that general vicinity. I have to drive that way all the time. And I can tell you that what you're going to do, because of the ordinance that you passed last time, is you're going to put brick walls down Turkey Trot and along Trumier because you said any new subdivision has to have an eight-foot brick wall around it, or six-foot masonry or concrete wall around it. That was one of the ordinances that had been talked about. So I want to make sure that we don't get to that point. But also, this is not a good fit for that area.
Sean Price. You have four minutes.
So I'm rising to speak under 55.0013B dash L, as well as 551.042.
Sir, I'm sorry. Are you on, this is a public hearing on this specific item. You have to discuss this on the item that we're discussing, only on this public hearing, this item. Do you have anything to say, sir? On the item for the public hearing?
Yeah, I did. But you're interjecting and taking my time, so I'm not allowed to actually speak.
Speak, Mr. Price.
Yeah, so, does anybody know how many acreage of Area A we have? How far have we developed the city to eliminate the city from any agricultural areas whatsoever? Do we know that? I don't think y'all do. And is there any contradiction? Because most of y'all are in real estate up here. Is there any contradictions from your companies or your friends' friends that they're gaining from this development? These are just questions I'm having, if there are any sidelines going on here. Because there's been whispers to me that that's exactly what's going on from several of the companies that y'all represent, kind of like Mr. Boyd over here and his situation.
Point of order has nothing to do with the agenda.
Mr. Price, this is a public.
Yeah, it does. Has to do with this right here, this public hearing right here.
Please stay on the agenda.
He addressed me.
It's public hearing.
And he addressed me, so I dressed him back, mayor. I think I'm well within my rights to do that. And your hate for people like me needs to end.
Mr. Price, I'm act, this is my last time. Please stay on the agenda.
And I am on the agenda.
The attack is not, it's not on the agenda. Just talk about the public hearing item.
I'm talking about the agricultural. Yeah? Because it's about development. We're taking all the agricultural areas in Colleen away and developing them. So that's my topic, not yours.
Public hearing closed. I want to make some corrections before we move forward, council. This particular item is not in District 2, it's in District 3. And now, Ms. Brown, for disrupting the meeting, that is your second warning I gave you, please take your stuff and leave this chamber and also this premises now. Mr. Price, that's your first warning for disrupting this meeting. As I stated, Ms. Brown, get your stuff and leave now. As I stated. Mr. Price, that was your second warning. Get your stuff, leave the chamber, and leave the premises now. Leave. We take a five-minute break. Melissa Brown, Sean Price, you disrupted the meeting. Please leave the chamber, and please leave the premises. We'll take a five-minute break. As I was saying, the second thing I wanted to talk about the project is that we all have an opinion, but our staff are professionals. They have the education, the experience to support the decision when it comes to our rezoning items. And also, this is on Trumier. And like I stated earlier before, I was so rudely interrupted, not in District 2. So when our staff say, I might going to allow, first of all, anybody to discredit our staff, period. That's just an opinion. Our staff know what they're talking about, and if they say that it falls within the comprehensive plan, and the things that I took from what Mr. Reva said that I think was an excellent way to put it, he said it adds to the neighborhood and the housing shortage. After speaking with General Admiral, he spoke with all the mayors yesterday. We went out to meet him, and one of the things, our soldiers coming in, affordability is big. And we also know there's a shortage on housing. And we are a city and a community of one, so therefore, building according to our comprehensive plan is so important to not only help our residents, but also our soldiers, men and women, that's defending this great nation. He also said it was physically responsible, and it was nearby all the city utilities. So to discredit or attempt to discredit our staff is wrong, because what he stated is from a professional experience of probably over 20-plus years. With that being said, Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I'm going to add some clarity before I make a motion here.
Did I close the public hearing?
Just make sure you did.
Public hearing closed, if I didn't close it. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to make just a statement for clarity prior to making a motion. The fence ordinance that was mentioned has not been passed yet. That conversation was tabled, from my understanding, and so that does not exist when it was pertaining to eight-foot stone masonry fences, first line of clarity. Also, I'm not going to speak on unsubstantiated claims related to what we heard. But I did want to mention in relation to what the mayor was stating, you know, development's going to continue just because the city is growing. We understand that. But I'll get to the point and make this motion. The public notification states that staff notified 98 surrounding property owners regarding this request, one level of opposition. Subject property is currently vacant in Zone A Agricultural District. The surrounding area includes developed single-family residential neighborhoods and some undeveloped residential properties. Staff finds that the applicant's request is consistent with the policies and principles of the Colleen 2040 Comprehensive Plan. With that said, I make a motion to approve PH dash 24 dash 045.
I need a second to that motion because I have Councilmember Segarra, Councilwoman Cobb, Councilmember Alvarez, and Mayor Protem, and Councilmember Solomon would like to speak on it. So out of that group.
I second that, madam.
Oh, Mayor Protem Gonzalez second the motion. With that being said, I'm going to, oh, I didn't know you was going to try to second that, Councilmember Segarra. I'm sorry about that, I didn't hear you. Councilwoman Cobb, you want to speak on the item?
Yes. Good evening. For over 20 years, 1988, I came to the city of Colleen. When I moved out in that area, I thought, you know, all I want to see are cows and no people. As our city has built and as new families have come in, I'm known for seeing my house, my property, I do what I want. my property, I do what I want to do. I realized as people came, as families began to grow, that the areas would change, that development would come. I like the point of adding to our housing area, maybe not agriculture right now, but residential. I believe that we can be in areas and that we can build and we can make things better. 30 years later, I'm going to go that we're going to not only make things better and that our developments will make things be anew, but families will learn to love the land and still do what we saw when we came out there. We saw blank areas and we thought that, you know what, we don't need all of these things. But I have learned through development, through growth, that families grow and things are still consistent. So it is consistent with the growth of Colleen and knowing the area. And if we build our homes correctly and use our spaces, we can still have that agriculture, residential, one area. It won't be agriculture anymore. It'd be R1, but we still meet the need of our families and our area. Let's just be consistent and mindful. I had to change some ideals. I'm sorry, I hit my tooth. I had to change some ideals because I thought that when we start growing and when things became short of space or not the big areas of land that I was used to where I could have my pig or I could have my cow and I could have all of these things. No, because of our zoning, it may change, but the idealism of keeping our families together and having that space and having some spaces with our yards or with some areas, let's not take it away. I do agree with the- I do agree with the motion. I agree with what we're doing. I just think that we have to think better, live better, and respect others better, and we'll be okay.
Thank you, Mayor. It seems we drift into these conversations regularly anytime that there's a zoning case, especially from agricultural to residential. And I like to remind the citizens that I speak with on a regular basis that, you know, our job up here is to discern and to listen, and at the end of the day, take any substantial concerns to the professionals, which are the professionals here on city staff. They're the ones who've gone to universities and earned degrees and have the accreditations and designations after their names for PE, for example, Professional Engineer, AICP for Professional Planner, just for example. So these are the folks that are the experts. I understand, as a lifelong resident of Colleen, I've driven these streets since I've had a license. So I understand our perception as citizens, and when we see traffic backing up on a road or we feel that things are a certain way, but I am honest and, I guess, realistic enough to admit that I'm not the expert. I didn't go to school for these things. I don't have AICP or PE after my name. So our job, just as the president or anybody else has a cabinet of experts on their team, these are our experts that we have to rely on. So we take what we hear from the public and your perceptions and your opinions and your thoughts and your concerns, and we try to sift through all that to see if there is a valid concern that we can take to the professionals and say, hey, look, this sounds like this really has some merit. Now, you tell me as the expert, is there some merit to that or is that just the way that we perceive it as a layperson, including myself? And any basic rezoning case, the question is pretty simple. Either we believe that the land, the highest and best use is residential, commercial, or industrial. That's the question. It's not, well, I want you to leave it the way it is, agricultural, because that's un-American. For us to force a property owner to not be able to do something that they want with their property or sell it to somebody willing to buy it and they want to do, I don't- I think that's un-American. That's my opinion. So if the person in this case wants to sell this property and he has a buyer and this is what the buyer wants to do with it, our question is that we believe the highest and best use is residential, commercial, or industrial. And in my case, the least, in my opinion and what we're receiving from staff, the least intensive use is residential. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Anybody- oh, okay. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. All right. Are you finished? Because she was going to give you her time, because you was on the roll, like.
I'd be willing to yield my time for Councilmember Alvarez should he need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I can finish my thoughts in another minute. So, you know, we have these conversations and we try to figure out if there's any substantial claims or concerns. We get with our experts and we come up to a decision. So all these things have been vetted and gone through. It's not like we're saying we want, the city wants houses here. That's not what we want. The case is coming up to us. There's a gentleman trying to sell a property. He has a buyer that wants to buy the property. This is what they want to do with it. Do we believe that this is the least intensive use or do we believe that it fits that area? And unfortunately, making them keep it undeveloped is not an option. So again, circling back to that very basic question, residential, commercial, industrial, what would you rather see there? Thank you.
Thank you. And before we vote, this one thing I didn't state earlier. Each individual on this dais has a profession. A profession is something that pays our bill. And whatever profession that we choose to make or whomever want to run for the seat in the future, they should not be judged by their profession. They should just be afforded the opportunity to work and also the opportunity to run for any seat or position within our city. With that being said, all in favor? Yes, all opposed? No?
The motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready, we have our discussion items. Counsel, you get three times to speak for three minutes.
DS 24065, Colleen 2020- excuse me, Colleen 2040 Comprehensive Plan Implementation Update.
Thank you and welcome back, Mr. Rebell.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. This is the year two update, implementation update for the comprehensive plan. As you all know, back in August of 2022, we adopted the citywide comprehensive plan as a guide for how the city would develop and grow over the next 20 years or so. All that involved detailed and intense community involvement and input from various stakeholders over months and months. And as a part of that, we developed a number of guiding principles. And so the next slide kind of shows those guiding principles, those big ideas that really affect how we do business, how we make decisions, how we set policy. And as you all have seen, that's constantly done in every item that's presented, that even is constantly done when we go through the budgeting process. These big ideas, I won't take a whole lot of time in it, but again, number one, it's really basically saying, you know, let's ensure that we're good stewards of the resources, that development pays for itself. And as development occurs, that resources are protected and preserved, whether those are historic resources, cultural resources, environmental resources, et cetera. Item number two basically says, let's ensure that we continue to have a positive community, that we allow for that community engagement activities, and we also hold each other accountable. You know, so the community engagement is those positive, fun things to do. But then some of those things that's where we have to hold people accountable, like code enforcement, that's saying, let's make sure that we do those kinds of things too. Big idea number three is really making sure that we invest in our workforce, we invest in our businesses, we make sure resources are available, we make sure training is available. And then the city also provides incentives and creates an environment that allows for businesses to flourish. And item number four basically said, let's continue to make sure that our transportation systems work for everybody, that they're safe, that they're ADA compliant, that we have the ability to ensure that people can move from place to place. And as you all know, just a couple of years back, we were really dealing with that, trying to make that happen with so many roads failing for various reasons, you know, lack of standards, not necessarily following the standards. But all of that stuff has been addressed and all has been a part of this effort that this council has really taken the leadership on. Item five really deals with, you know, while developers build subdivisions, cities build neighborhoods. While developers concerned about the short term, the cities are concerned about the long term. And then item six, you all saw the great presentation that Ms. Kate did just a month or so ago about making sure that we're ensuring that we have a vibrant downtown. So the next two items or the next two slides really kind of drill in on some major accomplishments that's tied back to each one of these big ideas. So I won't spend a ton of time on this, but as I mentioned earlier, even in our budgeting process, you know, we're asked as we make budgeting decisions, how does that align with the big ideas? That's a part of the budgeting process. I know even the council, when you set your priorities, you even consider that through the big ideas. So that is continuing to be done. We also have a dashboard for Colleen 2040 that allows not only us to understand what the progress is, but more importantly, allow our community stakeholders to understand what the progress is and what's going on. Again, those things are contributing, those two are both related to big idea number one and things that we're doing and have done in year two. The next two items really deal with big idea number two. I believe it was this council that asks for make sure that we've got an outdoor lighting ordinance and, again, trying to preserve our natural environment and trying to preserve the space that humans interact in and are in. And then also, the last bullet on this slide really deals with, again, that community engagement opportunities, to build that positive interest, to build that positive energy, to build community. And we've got, obviously, this is just one event that's referenced here, but we know we do seven or so, seven or so signature events a year, and that's just downtown, but there are other events that's done all across the city to build community engagement as well. We've achieved the Texas Brew City designation. Again, just things that kind of speak to what makes the city different, what makes the city fun, what makes the city a place where people want to be. And then the next two items really deal with the third big idea, as you remember, investing in a local ecosystem. You know, the subdivision planning process, by making that administrative, believe it or not, that helps a lot, that helps to ensure that projects can be done quicker and they can get online quicker. That saves money, that saves time, and that allows taxes to be generated sooner. So that most certainly has a circular economic impact. And then in our TERS, the TERS investment, you know, it was revised just a year or two ago, and now we have a TERS that's functioning well where, as shown on this slide, we're estimating about $200 million in increased property value. The next few bullets really deal with that item four about our roads. I can't say enough about that with what has been done to make sure, if you talk about the street maintenance fee, if you talk about updating our standards for our roadways and make sure that we have, we ensure the pavement life, or if you talk about the modeling that's done periodically to ensure that we employ the right maintenance practices so that we extend the life of our roadways. And as you can see on the slides, we've got several roadway construction projects going on right now. Bunny Trail, Watercrest, Gilmore, all of the investment probably most likely in excess of $22 million. And then we've got several that are coming, Rancier Avenue and Stagecoach, in terms of roadway designs and moving those forward toward construction. And item, the next item or the next two items or the next three items really deal with building neighborhoods, not subdivisions. And it may be hard to see the first bullet, but this first bullet is really dealing with we transform or move or transition our permitting process from a decentralized process to a more consolidated centralized process. So the old process, you know, all the engineering stuff was in one database, all the planning stuff was in another database, and all the code enforcement stuff was in a different database. This centralized system had brought all of those various functions together into one database to allow for collaboration, to allow for things to happen through a process. And of course, if you can do that and seal up that process, then you can help to ensure that all of those different entities that have a review component associated with making the neighborhood complete actually contributed in such a way and in such a format that we can deliver on that. And so that's really transformed our operations by having that continuous, well-connected process as it relates to our regulatory items. Short-term rental registration ordinance, you're aware that we passed that. And then also, just recently, the screening device regulations that provides that separation between commercial and residential. And then the last two bullets really deal with the investments into downtown. For every $25 of private investment that has been a result of $1 of city investment, so $1 of public investment has yielded $25 in private investment. That's a great return. And then, as you can see, the number of businesses and jobs that have been added downtown. Touchdown downtown, just to give a flavor for the kinds of crowds that we draw. And then the next few slides really kind of deal with the update. So obviously, not started means that we, first of all, we have a total of about 180 comp plan implementation activities. Not started means it hasn't started yet. It's just, it hasn't come to time. It's a 10-year plan, so it may not be the time for it, or there may not be resources available to allow us to move on that, but resources to move on something else. In progress means it's started, but it hasn't been completed. In progress and ongoing means that it's started and it will continue for the life of the implementation of the plan itself. And completed means it's started and complete. So what does that mean? If you compare 2023 to 2024 in terms of implementation, you can really look at this from two perspectives. The first perspective is not started versus not started. So in 2023, 45% was not started. Now we have 34% that's not started. So that's progress. And or you can look at it on the other side, 55% in 2023 was completed or in progress and now, so somewhere at a half and now somewhere at two-thirds, at 63% in this, as a result of 2024 implementation, is in progress or completed. So I'm almost finished, I promise. Year three goals and priorities. We're looking forward to continuing to build upon what we've been doing to build neighborhoods and to build community through our development standards. So the first bullet kind of speaks to that. There's also a need to make sure that we have a citywide strategic housing plan. That's really important as we really try to advance some of those not started activities associated with neighborhoods. Having this strategic housing plan will help us to get those things moving. The third bullet really deals with making sure that some of the benefits that we've had in having a comp plan that kind of deals with all across the city, how do we bring that to a scale, to a neighborhood scale and provide those benefits, provide those resources, and provide that attention at that level? So we want to take a drill-in look at North Colleen revitalization area and develop those improvement plans at that level, in that place. It's also good to note that we anticipate the start of the construction of Stagecoach Reconstruction Project. We believe early in 2025 that that project can be out to bid if not sooner. We also believe that we will be able to complete Bunny Trail and Gilmore Road Reconstruction Projects in year three, achieve Texas Main Street designation. We know that will happen based on the latest information that we've received from the state. And then also be able to host a local developer boot camp to ensure that we are bringing the small developers on board and making those incremental improvements that oftentimes small developers can do and make happen. In addition, we plan, we see the adoption of the water and wastewater master plan is being updated from the 2019 plan. We've been in conversations with KEDC and agreed that we need to have an economic development strategic plan that includes all community partners. So there's work being done there, and we believe that can move forward. Also, we will continue the relentless efforts of trying to attract the grocery store to North Colleen. That effort will not stop. In addition, we will continue to develop a dashboard that helps to better track and make transparent our land use. and, and make transparent our land use and infrastructure, fiscal performance considerations, continue our citywide, or city-initiated rezoning efforts. We know there are 300-plus properties that require that. We know that there's a cost savings associated with that, that, that citizens are, are getting a benefit from that, and we want to continue that effort. And then, as you've heard tonight, beginning the construction of the reunification campus to deal with our unsheltered populations, and then also adopt the 2024 international codes. And that concludes the presentation.
Mr. Rebell, your staff, y'all have done an excellent job pushing our comprehensive plan, also all the other executive directors, because we are Team Colleen, we work as one.
Yes, ma'am.
In ensuring that the, the council intent, the residents' intents are met through the comprehensive plan. And, 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 you know, you will see it, when we started this process, that this was going to be something that was going to be put on the shelf, that it was not going to be used, and we were misusing or in appropriation of funds because we weren't going to use it. And if you drive through our city, you cannot tell me you don't see it. So thank you and your staff for all you do to make Colleen a better place for all.
And ma'am, if I may respond.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for pointing that fact out. It is a team effort.
Yes, sir.
This, this comp plan, you know, where we may have responsibility for caretaking it, is every department that's plugged in, ensuring and making sure that it's being implemented. And it's Mr. Kayle making sure that we are being held accountable, and that we're setting up a, an accountability structure that continues to make sure that we advance the comp plan. So it's a team effort, and, and, and we appreciate the opportunity to be on the team.
Thank you, Team Colleen. Councilwoman Cobb, and then Councilmember Boyd.
I have to take a note from our mayor. The road to success is always the construction that the team is working on. I am so proud. You can't tell Nina Melinda Williams Cobb anything. When they talk about this staff, when they speak of this city, when they speak of the journey, I am so happy to say, yeah, I'm a councilwoman, and we are bad, huh? We are really doing it. You see happy smiles on families. You see growth. Yeah, some things are lacking. It takes some time. Remember, the road to success is the construction and the work that our staff, our council, our constituents and constituents, and what everyone's putting into it. I'm a proud city councilwoman, and you can't take that away from me. I am proud of the work that this council has done, that the staff has done, and...
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Oh, my God. I did not see that coming. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah. This is definitely not a shelved document. We spent over $300,000 for this comprehensive plan. I remember the launch at the Civic Center. It was well-attended, and this council has been consistent in supporting this comprehensive pla- plan. Our staff has been consistent in implementing it. This is the second report we have of progress based on a comprehensive plan, that we will visually see progress for our city established over time. So glad to support it. It was good to see as well the implementation of the Economic Development Strategic Plan initiative to include community partners. I know that's something that I mentioned some time back, and it's good to see that that value will be placed into the incorporation of this plan over time. So Colleen is moving forward. I, too, am a proud city councilman, and I'm glad to see the progress this community is making over just the past few years. It's good stuff. Thank you, Mr. Rebell.
Thank you, Mr. Rebell. Madam Secretary.
DS 24066, Discuss City Council, City Council Meeting Protocol.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, I thank you all for everything that you do. This item I put on because of things that have been transpiring in the city chamber during our official city council meeting. And what individuals don't know, when we come here, it's business. Everything we do from this dais is for the greater good of our city. So a couple residents, after two weeks ago incident, I've heard from a lot of residents in reference to my safety, in reference to the resident's safety, staff's safety in this council. And they talked about our protocol, because most people don't know our protocol, how we do things here. And this discussion item is not to change our protocol, not even to update our protocol. I just think that this is the correct format to get conveyed over to our residents, that we do have police officers here. They will protect you at all costs. You do not have to be afraid to attend. The council know the protocol. If things get out of control, where we need to go, and it's for safety reasons, I cannot share that with you. So I just hope you trust us, that our decisions that are being made here is in a safe environment, and you are welcome to come back. So please, do not be afraid. You will be taken care of. That's the staff, the council, and also you. And also, Count Mayor Protem would like to also add to that.
Thank you, madam. There's, you know, as we gather in this forum, I think it's really important that we understand, you know, I wasn't really sure what we're talking about as far as protocol, but I do think it's important that we also confront a pressing question that keeps coming up, and that I'm hearing also from constituents, and that's where does one person's rights infringe upon another? And so with that, just as you've heard call, you've received calls of people concerned or fearful of coming in to the chambers, I think that that's, it's, it's a very uncomfortable conversation that I'm having to have with my constituents, because I don't have an answer for them. And I just wanted to thank you for now allowing me the opportunity to be on the record as well, that this conversation is happening publicly. I don't have an answer for them, but, but you did say there are safety parameters in place, and that they have the opportunity to come in, and they also have the right to be here, I think is also something that's very important. The dilemma that we face is not theoretical, it is legitimate. You know, we're dealing with sometimes via, you know, concerns that are conflicting or, or challenged ideas. You know, that's why I said before, and I will stand on this, that civil discourse is always the best way and the only way for us to continue to conduct our business for the city, to be able to understand the challenges and the thing, the questions that arise, and to be able to handle them. But it's a very delicate balance that we have to, to maintain. So for me, to be able to say to the citizens that have inquired, or the ones that have been personally attacked in these chambers, that it is not representative of us or how I feel. It's deeply offensive, but we understand the nature of having thick skin, as we've been told many times as it relates to this business, that's not what this is about. This is something far greater. Words have consequences. Some people take them seriously, some people don't. So when you question, without going into complete details about protocol, but as it relates to how do we conduct ourselves here, how do we keep the business going? You even have questions being asked, and Madam Attorney, I don't know if there's a way, maybe we can answer it, if not now, later, but constituents ask, is it appropriate to stop the meetings completely when there's disruptions and people are asked to be removed because they can't focus? So our question here has become a dilemma for us. Do we continue to conduct business? Do we pause the meeting? Do we wait until it's completely clear? That's something that they're asking us to address so that they can get the flu, the fluidity of the meeting and get an understanding of what's actually happening here. Because on the other side, especially if they're not in the room, it is very disruptive, and they don't know what's happening, and it's been scary for some people watching. And so I don't have that answer. Again, if it's something we can think about as to how we handle that, if this is the best way to pause the meeting, or to, you know, and to wait until everything is, is back in order, I think it is a very realistic and viable question that we should answer for, for our constituents. But there's questions regarding the safety of... Go ahead, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I'll touch on it later, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Boyd, and, and, and what this is all about, it's not about protocol, making new protocols, everyone concerned about our safety, concerned about common, concerned about, is it, is for staff, and we want to assure you on record, this was the best format to let the residents know, we want you to come back, and this is a safe environment. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Determined to speak on this. We're here to conduct city business. Business is the key word, and I know citizens have watched, observed, and in real time witnessed the foolishness, nonsense, disruption, distractions, and domestic terrorist behavior, I'll even say, to an extent. Our job is to balance the freedom of speech as well as decorum, and that's one thing the mayor is very much tasked with doing. And I believe she's doing the best she can despite all the unnecessary attacks that are coming her way. We are responsible individuals, adults, that are sitting in here and sit at this dais, and we're here to take care of business, and citizens are here to learn about how their tax dollars are being spent, and about the progress that's being made across the city, and it's good to know that we're able to do that despite. I also have had citizens reach out to me with concerns about actually sitting here in the chambers and, and what they've seen on TV. And we do have police officers here, and I hate to have to say that, because it's like, it comes off as if the police have to be here for you to feel safe. I feel very safe on this dais. Every Tuesday, I come up here, I come sit down, I'm comfortable, despite, you know, what comes our way. And that's how it should be, and I hope our citizens will, will have that takeaway. And so that's what I have to say in relation to the meeting protocol. Thank you.
Thank you. And one of the statements that were made by me when I stated that I did not even feel safe when the police was here, and I want to tell you from what context, because people have a tendency to take things and run with them. Two weeks ago, when I was in here by myself with a reporter, just catching up on paperwork, and I want the residents to hear this clearly, an individual came in here and was, came toward me in a very aggressive behavior. The police was outside, and they were not aware of what was going on, because first of all, we had just completed a Hispanic Heritage Celebration, and the council meeting hadn't even started. I just came in to take care of the business of the city. So it was from that perspective that I did not feel safe, even though they were out there, they was not aware what was going on in here, and I did not feel safe. And that was just that particular incident, because I do feel safe with our Colleen fine, inside our police department. So this is protocol, it's in place, you will be safe and protected if you come. So please come back, and thank you for your concerns for us, our staff, and also the residents that are here. With that being said, Madam Secretary, we will be going into our executive session. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Law, VTCA Government Code 551.001, the mayor now calls a closed meeting of the city council on the 22nd day of October 2024, 5:05 PM, under the following authority. Section 551.089, Deliberation Regarding Security Devices of Security Audits. The city council will discuss security assessments of deployments relating to August 2024 information technology incident, including confidential network security information. We are now going to closed session. Counsel, we're going to call this meeting back together. Let the record show that all, all of councils here, except Councilmember Solomon, is 5:41 PM. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, move to adjourn.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Mayor, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.